...place in poetry judging competition at the state tournament. And they continued among three time routine state line. Mickey Reed and Katherine Grimmer are the Bridgepoint High School FFA chapter advisors. Next we have some talented athletes to recognize. At the UIO State Track Meet, the following athletes finished in the top three in the state winning either gold, silver, or bronze medals. From Austin High School, Howell Wady finished second place in a girls' high jump. From Dallas High School, Quinnon Hotten finished second place in the boys' high jump. This year's track season was also highlighted by the Hightower Girls four by 400 meter race relay team running the fastest time in the nation. From Hightower High School, Gabrielle Oladiguu finished third place in shotgun and second place in the distance. Beraxes Hawkins, Avette Banks, Jira Smith, and Tyler Rose won first place in the four by 400 meter girls' relay. Inausha Fisher is the coach of winning team. The Marshall High School Boys Track Team won its second FFA Boys State Track Championship in the road. For Marshall High School, we have Siderian Lynch, John Eisen, Shimon Ihemor, and Jermaine Whitaker who won first place in the four by 100 meter boys' relay. The four member team won first place in the four by 200 meter boys' relay and we have Jeremy Smith, Siderian Lynch, Shimon Ihemor, and Jermaine Whitaker. Shimon Ihemor also won first place in the 200 meter race. He is deemed... He is being deemed one of the fastest men in America with a time of...
With a time of 20.56 in the 200 meter run. Shimon was invited to compete at the Nike Elite Camp in Oregon. He also represented the state of Texas at the Great Southwest Classic. He is currently ranked number three in the nation and in the 200 meter dash. Lloyd Banks is the coach of this winning team. He was voted the 215 Texas High School Coach of the Year by the U.S. Track and Field and Cross Country Coaches Association. Also in 2015, the Texas Track and Field Coaches Association Coach of the Year and the 2015 Prairie View Interscholastic League Coaching Association Boys Coach of the Year. In all, Fort Bend ISD athletes brought home 17 state track championship medals, of which 13 were gold. Congratulations to all these amazing students. And tonight, if you're here to represent these students, will you please stand so we may recognize all of those that are recognized tonight? Thank you, Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for being here. Next are our audience items. We have one person signed up this evening. Carrie Waschenfelder, is she here? Wait and make sure she's not outside. Okay, moving on to information items. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Hold on, there we go. Yes, ma'am, we have four items tonight. The first item is an update on the 2016-17 strategic plan. Beth Martinez, our Chief of Staff in Strategic Planning, is going to provide a brief update to the board on our work in that area. Beth?
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good afternoon, good evening, board members.
I don't think you're on.
It's green. I just think I can't get low enough down. We need to...
Tonight I will provide an overview of the 2016-17 strategic plan, which is based on my board's mission, vision, focus...
This evening I will highlight the goals and objectives that we will be asking you to approve in July, and I will focus on objectives and strategies that address the board's priorities. And the board's priorities are curriculum, leadership development, assessment, program evaluation, and dashboard metrics. So as we go through this evening, I will share detailed information about the measurable evidence of success that is shared throughout the plan that you received prior to this meeting and will be included on the slides particularly in reference to Goal One, which is the goal that is associated with the board's priority of curriculum. And you will notice as we move through the presentation that the evidence that will demonstrate success throughout our planning process and implementation this year, we have written them in a smart... in a way that makes them smart. So they are strategic, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. Following your approval of the 16-17 goals and objectives, we will provide evidence to you that demonstrates success in support of our strategies and objectives to meet your goals in a variety of ways. You may find this evidence in the form of a delivery of a product such as a plan or a framework. As we develop plans and frameworks, we will be sure to include metrics to measure success throughout implementation. You may receive evidence in measurable outcomes that will be developed in tandem with program improvements that we will implement during the 16-17 school year. You may receive a deliverable of data that reflects measurable results of program improvement efforts or the implementation of plans that include measurable outcomes. So in the planning document that you were provided prior to this evening's meeting, you may have noticed that there were some words that were in bold font. And throughout this evening's presentation, you will note the same. As we move through Goal One through to Goal Five, you'll notice that we have bolded words that align with the board's priorities, those five priorities that I referenced. And I will provide for you a fairly detailed summary of Goal One. We'll go over the goal, the objectives, the strategies, and evidence that will demonstrate success that will be reported back to the board. Then as we move through Goals Two through Five, we'll go through those at a fairly high level, and I will take the time to highlight for you where we have alignment with the priorities of the board. So District Goal One addresses the board's curriculum priority and is supported by three objectives that will be implemented with specific evidence to demonstrate success. In the slides that follow, we will review each objective strategy and the evidence that will demonstrate success. Objective One is where we will be demonstrating the development of systems that will be used to ensure the delivery of an unbiased, guaranteed, aligned, written, taught, and tested curriculum. And the success measures are that we will create and develop a comprehensive plan for the writing and implementing of the district's curriculum in the core content areas, in CTE, and in the elective areas. This will include embedded modifications for diverse learners as well as the inclusion of resources. And so this deliverable will come to you as a comprehensive plan outlining our timeline and framework for how this will be done and when it will be completed. The next two measures are very similar. The second and third bullet address two areas of the curriculum. So in summary, we will demonstrate the completion of both the science and the social studies curriculum for grades K through 12. And this will include embedded instructional resources, embedded curriculum content modifications for diverse learners, strategies for differentiating instruction, and resources to support campus-based and district-level common formative assessments. We continue with Goal One, and you see that this strategy is develop a plan for implementing the district's aligned, written, taught, and tested curriculum that incorporates monitoring protocols to demonstrate the fidelity of delivery in an unbiased manner. So it is what's being taught in alignment with our curriculum. And we will demonstrate success through our educational technology framework through the implementation of the Technology Master Plan. So this was presented in the recent past to you all, and this framework is actually the implementation of that plan. And a component of that that aligns with our curriculum is the plan for migrating from our current curriculum management system to a more robust learning management system. We will implement the plans for construction of a new CTE facility, which will increase opportunities for students to earn industry certification and dual credit coursework, and it aligns with House Bill Five. Continuing on with Goal One, we will provide evidence to demonstrate the development of measurable outcomes and implementation of a well-defined, structured model for elementary ESL support that promotes instructional practices and will result in improved student outcomes for our elementary ESL students. We will demonstrate the fidelity of implementation of the district's math curriculum, and this will be evidenced through our elementary walkthrough observation data. We'll be establishing a baseline in the 16-17 school year to show at least 80% alignment with the district curriculum. And at the secondary level, the secondary walkthrough observation data will show an improvement from 86% to 90% alignment with the district curriculum. As we move through Goal One, touching on Objective Two, the strategy that supports this objective is to develop a comprehensive system which will include restorative discipline that addresses academic, behavioral, social, and emotional supports for all students to remove barriers such as bullying, discipline issues, attendance, and at-risk factors which will enable all students to maximize their full potential. And we will provide evidence to show success that we have... that we are moving toward meeting this goal by implementing and monitoring the required PBMAS or corrective action plans. We'll provide improved processes for the identification of GT students through assessment instruments and selection procedures. And we're focused on increased demographic diversity among the population of students being identified as gifted and talented. We will develop and measure a supplemental reading curriculum for students in kinder through 12th grade who are identified with dyslexia or dysgraphia. We'll provide evidence to demonstrate the development of measurable outcomes and the implementation of, several items here, a comprehensive evaluation metric for all campus fine arts programs, designed to increase accountability, instructional competence, and student achievement, a consolidated model for the district's alternative education placement, or DAEP, which includes increased accountability for quality teaching, focused social skill instruction, a defined counseling support program, use of restorative discipline practices, and transition support for students back to their home campus. Measurable outcomes and implementation of the continued application of a transitional early exit bilingual education model. We will provide evidence to demonstrate the development of measurable outcomes and the implementation of a comprehensive evaluation metric for all fine arts programs. Am I in Groundhog Day the movie, or did I just say that?
Beth, I think it might be good to go ahead. I think you've given a really good overview of one. Let's move to the other four.
So as we move forward to Goals Two through Five, you can see that Goal Two is our hiring process, our recruitment and development and retaining of effective teachers and staff. And this highlights our... sorry, let me regroup here for a second. As we move forward to Goals Two through Five, I will focus on that alignment to the priorities. So we'll go rather quickly here. Goal Two is focused on our recruitment, development, and retention of effective teachers and staff. And Goal Three, we're focused on providing a supportive climate and a safe learning and working environment. And this will be accomplished through character education, parent and community engagement, and proactive communication systems. And Goal Four is closely aligned and supports the goals of the board and the priority of leadership development. And in Goal Four, we will provide and promote leadership development at all levels, and that includes a leadership development program for our students in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. The leadership development framework for students and staff will be closely tied to and supported by the core beliefs and commitments. And evidence that will demonstrate success for leadership development is that comprehensive plan for leadership development of our students in kinder through 12th grade, a leadership development plan for executive leaders, managerial leaders, and specific leadership development based on engagement surveys and climate surveys and data that we receive in the district. So leaders will be able to develop in a way that is based on data that is reflective of practices in order to continuously improve their practices, leaders within the district. Goal Five addresses the board's priority to develop dashboards and a scorecard. And we will be working, our key performance indicators will be in development this year as a part of that goal. We will also complete two pilots for program evaluation on Vistus and Naviance and complete a program evaluation guidebook, as well as a more comprehensive program evaluation plan with a real prioritized cycle of what programs will be evaluated, how, and when over a longer period of time. So following the board's feedback and possible approval of the district goals and objectives we reviewed this evening, staff will finalize activities to support the execution of strategy and provide updates to the board. And we open this up for your feedback and questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. We appreciate that presentation. Does the board have questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
So under District Goal One, where you're talking about evidence to demonstrate success, continued, so page four, you talked about district's mathematics curriculum as measured by elementary walkthrough observation data, and then secondary walkthroughs. And to me, that kind of sounds like you're going to go through classrooms, and if a teacher's off by a few days here or there from where they're supposed to be, then that creates a problem. And to me, that sounds like lockstep, and it sounds like it's not going to help. If I understand it correctly, that doesn't sound like something that's going to help students reach their full potential, because if students are back here, but yet the teachers are going to get penalized for being here, then that's going to basically just create a compliance checkbox, and has nothing to do with student achievement. And I've heard a lot about this. That word keeps coming up, lockstep, 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 lockstep. It's a problem. And this kind of seems, again, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're actually putting that as a strategy or a district goal. I have a problem with that.
Let me... because I've visited with you about this recently, Mr. Rosenthal. And Mark or Deanna, you're welcome to... or Phyllis, you're all are welcome to jump in as well. But I think the intent here is not the timeframe for which the curriculum is delivered, but it's whether the things being taught, the materials being used, and the concepts are in alignment with our district curriculum, which is based on the TEACs. So what we would expect to see regardless, you know, if you walk in a classroom, I use the term bundles. I don't think that's our official term. But I think if you look, typically our curriculum is designed in units, six-week or nine-week units or so. You would expect to see them within a range within that unit, because teachers, based on the needs of the students, are going to be in a variety of places. We would not expect them to be on the same point across the district, because it's going to be very different based on student needs and their differentiation. But we would expect them to be teaching according to the district curriculum, the things that they're actually teaching the students, and that's what we would be looking for.
Okay, but that's not really what this says, then. So then it needs to get... it needs to get flushed out a little more, because to me, this says that some district administrator says this is where all students need to be on this particular date regardless of anything. That's what I read into this.
Okay, well, I don't read it that way, but I'm happy to look at it with staff and visit with you some more about it.
Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. I... first of all, I appreciate all the work that went into this, and I see... I'm very glad that we've kind of narrowed all of this down to the five, you know, to our five priorities. So I really appreciate that. I did notice, though, there are a few things listed here that are not in the five priorities, and I wonder if you could speak to that and sort of give us an understanding of what that means. And I guess my follow-up question to that would be, how do we keep that from being a distraction to the things that the board has set as the top five things that need to get done first?
There are some operational goals and strategies that we must focus on that are as critical to the success of students as some of the priorities in the sense of the safety and security. We must ensure the safety and security or that we're effectively communicating with our stakeholders, our students and parents, and community members. And so those are two examples that come to mind that don't necessarily tie directly to a priority, but certainly support the five priorities and cannot be neglected. We must address and make a plan and ensure that we have measurable evidence to know that we're on track and we're meeting those needs and not... there are no gaps in the support of the board's priorities.
Okay. And I guess I understand that, that there's things that have to continue. I just want to be sure that we don't get distracted by the wrong things and, you know, have a list of completion items that aren't aligned to what our priorities are. And I realize there have to be other... there have to be other completion items besides those things listed, but I also want to be sure that we're prioritizing those in the right way when, I guess, when y'all are prioritizing your work, and Dr. Dupree is overseeing that, that we're prioritizing the right way and not getting distracted by other things that might be easier or more quickly accomplished or something.
The whirlwind of the day-to-day. Right.
Yes. Mrs. James, I totally agree and understand with your point. I think what I would add to support what Beth has mentioned is that there are many aspects of running the district, as you know, and our focus is going to be on the priorities. But everything in here, I think you will find, is also focused on improving student achievement, even if they're not on the top five list. And some are operational, like the measurement and just the community engagement, and those kinds of things that are very important. And so they're all designed to support the board's five priorities. But I think, as you know, if we just did those five things, then we would have some major gaps in other areas. So I see this entire document as really being a strong roadmap, if you will, for staff, knowing the board's five priorities are here, but these other items are critical to supporting those things. So I think they're all going to get good attention and will keep us from being distracted by things that are not important.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. So since you brought up student achievement, I have a thought on that. You know, in the end, all this... all of these things that we're doing, we need to help students have better outcomes. And so I struggled to find that in here. And I think maybe this kind of aligns with what Mr. Rosenthal was saying. He sees, okay, we're going to go through, and we're going to do our walkthroughs, and we're going to make our checkboxes. But what he wants to know is, how are we really improving our student outcomes? If we're on the same page or within a window of time in a certain place in the curriculum, well, that's great, but how do we know... how are we measuring that this curriculum that we're trying to implement is actually helping our student outcomes? And I think that's what we want in the end, to improve student outcomes. So I don't know if that can be incorporated into that goal. I'm not sure we're at a place where we know how to really... how to evaluate that or what... I'm not... I don't know. But if we can strengthen that in our evidence in any places, then I think that that's important. Because in the big picture, all that matters is improved student outcomes, student growth, student progress, students graduating, students being promoted to the next grade. And that's what I'm... you know, that's... all of these things we do have to be in support of that effort.
Yes, and we're absolutely in agreement with it. Based on the last year or so of working with the board and developing plans, the board's defined clear... five clear priorities, all of which are aligned around improving student achievement. But I think where we are as an organization and in the stage of organizational development we're in, as we've also discussed with the board numerous times in this room, even the board led the discussion, is that at this point, we're creating a number of products that are going to later achieve results. But today, in this document, you're seeing the measurement is going to be the delivery of products. This time next year, we should be talking about the results that those products are going to deliver for us, because we're all in agreement, student achievement is the number one, and everything is focused on that. But we're trying to build the foundation for that by building the right systems to support it.
Okay. And I think that's... I think that's good, because we have to have the systems. I understand we have to have the plans. But then I think about what Mr. Rosenthal said, and he's talking about, I mean, we're talking about a math curriculum that's already written, that's being implemented, that's already was used this year. So I'm not... I guess I'm not too clear why we can't look at how our students are doing and what their growth is in that, even if it's just in the math section. That's all I'm... I don't know if we can look at that, but I would like to make that suggestion.
We can look at that as we come, because we're not bringing this for approval until July at the earliest, so we'll be happy to look at that in that light.
Okay, that would be great. I have a couple more specific questions, but I don't know if other people have some more general things.
Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. And Mrs. Martinez, thank you for a very nice presentation. Excellent, as usual. My colleagues have raised some good points, and I appreciate the finer points of that. And I wonder if we could, the next time you present, we could understand how we'll use this information when we're out on the campuses, walking through the classrooms, and if we see that some students are falling behind, how we will use that information in a productive and positive way to help. Maybe if I were a teacher, maybe I might be struggling. I might be a first-year teacher. Is there a way to get an older or more experienced or a master teacher to give you some tips on how to reach... maybe that could be incorporated? I don't know. But I would just like to add that. And also, I know under your capable leadership, we will get there.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, another question. So under curriculum checkpoints, so we're not going to use district assessments anymore?
That is correct.
Okay, so what's the difference between the curriculum checkpoint and the district assessment?
I'm going to ask the curriculum folks to speak directly to that.
I'll go ahead and speak to it. Our committee, as during the work, looked at checkpoints being the difference of a smaller, perhaps a little more comprehensive, but small check in time for how a student is doing and progressing within the curriculum. The district assessments are usually longer and have been given less frequently. So our goal was to have these approximately every nine weeks, at least as we begin the process, of course, then to be monitored and to be adjusted if needed, but to start with the nine weeks. And I know Dr. Hill may want to elaborate on that, and the team is working on that. But the original idea was kind of that, I guess you could call it that dipstick into the oil, checking where you are along the way.
So how much preparation is there going to be for these things on the part of teachers and students?
Well, the intent, I'll just jump in there. The intent is the preparation would be all the material that's been taught during those nine weeks. I think one of the primary distinctions is that the previous district assessments included field test questions of things students had not been taught yet.
Right.
Which is one of the things we determined is just not appropriate to be in this kind of assessment. So like Christie said, it should be a very small, it shouldn't take a whole period even. It should be a few minutes to go in and do a handful of questions to determine, are the students learning? Have they mastered the material that was taught during that window of time? So there shouldn't be special preparation. It shouldn't involve shutting down learning for extended periods. It should be administering it. Then teachers use it to inform instruction going forward to determine, have they taught it well? Have the students mastered it? Does individual students require intervention? Or does an entire class require intervention? That kind of thing. It's much more diagnostic.
So are we doing that this year, and how will the results be used or evaluated or monitored or?
We are, we are doing that this year, and we will be providing the results in Edgiforia as a centerpiece for their professional learning community so that if one teacher is having a lot of success in an area where another teacher, I heard Mr. Rice speak to that earlier, is struggling or her students, his students might not have done quite as well, that provides the centerpiece for that discussion and collaboration to help each other in addition to the administration to provide support. But it will be fed into Edgiforia so that the campus, teacher by teacher, can use it grade level by grade level, course by course, but we can also look at it as a district.
I would interject in regard to Mr. Rosenthal's first question. It's another way we can determine if the curriculum is actually being taught because we would expect students to do well on the checkpoints if the curriculum and instruction are aligned well each and every day in the classroom. So it's just one other measure.
Okay, so I have one other point, and I'm not sure, I mean, I guess since we are talking about curriculum development, right?
Yes, sir.
As our first goal. I want to tie in what I brought up at the Chamber Luncheon the other day because I think that kind of does fit in here. And what I had discussed, I asked our state Board of Education chair, I brought up the fact that in the sixth-grade teaks, math teaks, that we're teaching, and we're spending about three weeks to do it, we're teaching 11- and 12-year-olds how to read credit reports. And I can understand that that's 11th and 12th grade, but 11- and 12-year-old kids, I don't think that we should be doing that. And so my question is, or my comment is, do we want to be our own district, or do we want to just do what the state tells us to do? Because we have a lot of kids that can use that three weeks to get stronger on some of the basics, especially in sixth grade, rather than learning how to read credit reports and whatnot that they really don't need to do until they're 11th and 12th grade. And so I'd kind of like us to think about that as we're developing this curriculum Because when you hear people talking about, we're teaching to the test, well, that's what that means. Because we're teaching kids irrelevant stuff just because it's on a test, and we're spending three weeks of time to do it. And so to me, I think we should differentiate ourselves from other districts that may be doing that and do the minimum, you know, just to be in compliance with the state on that, but really, you know, do our own thing with regards. And there's probably lots and lots of examples, but that's one that was recently communicated to me, so.
I think that's an excellent example, and I think we would all agree with you wholeheartedly that that's the approach we need to take. And I also, and that is, one of the things in writing a curriculum that we do is we analyze, you know, what is the most important, what's, I guess, the high yield for the students, as you described, some of those core areas they have to master. And I think we would agree that if the state's not going to do it, then we have to do it for our students. And so I think that that is a big part of what we would be doing as we work on this curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Okay. Oh, Mrs. James.
Thank you.
Round two.
You put me on the timer. I can take it. Okay, well, I like that concept because I like the fact that we, here in Fort Bend, we know what our, you know, we are the ones who know what our students need to know and need to focus on, and we're analyzing their data, we're analyzing their, you know, where they are and what's going on. And I feel like that it's wise for us to prioritize that. So because I think we have a lot of teachers right now who are overwhelmed in their teaching environments. So I know we're kind of straying off the track here, but it's related to the comprehensive plan, which is under objective one, for writing and implementing the district's core curriculum and the career and technical ed curriculum and elective curriculum. And I don't know, some of it, some of it, it seems like the district's core curriculum is either partially done or has a plan to be done. And I guess, but if you're, if there's an effort being made to kind of relook at this, then maybe we should think about prioritizing some things. And I assume that the career and technical education curriculum and elective curriculum, when that's built out, is going to have the modifications built in, the resources built in, and all the extensions all built into it. So that's, I, thank you, I see a lot of nodding going on, so I'm going to say that's, that's well done. And I guess then this ties me into the next, into the learning management system because I read in one of these evidence statements that we were going to make a plan for migrating to the learning management system. And I kind of had thought from our last meeting that we already had a plan, but maybe I misunderstood that.
We do have a plan for the development of the curriculum. However, the migration is dependent upon the vendor, and we had not brought to you the RFP because they work with us in the actual timeline for migration and the methods for that.
So the main thing that's missing is the timeline, or do we?
The vendor.
I thought we approved the vendor, or I guess we're approving it tonight.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. So we don't, so we don't have a plan, really? We just have, as soon as we get the, as soon as we get the vendor, then we're developing the plan?
If the vendor is approved, there are some opportunities within the next few weeks for more learning and planning with more specificity of that. But we can't go forward, they have a part in that, we can't go forward without approval.
Okay. All right. And I think that's good. I'm good.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Six B is the superintendent evaluation instrument for the 2016-17 school year.
Yes, ma'am. Trustees, you were provided with a draft document in advance of the meeting. And so really, the main point I would want to make at this point, to get, again, around your discussion, is the evaluation instrument is essentially verbatim segments from the strategic plan that are only linked to the five priorities. So all the other items, as we mentioned earlier, there's seven pages worth of information in the plan, but the evaluation instrument is only tied directly to the seven top, I'm sorry, the five priorities already identified by the board. Now, one area, a couple of specific areas I wanted to get your thoughts about. First, I'll tell you something in regard to your feedback previously provided. It was my hope to give you a new draft of this instrument this evening, but that just wasn't able to happen today because of other constraints. But the intent, based on your feedback, is to reorganize this document in such a way so that it is all content gathered around the actual priorities. So for example, all of the items related to curriculum would be together, the items around leadership development would be together, so it's easier to follow and see those relationships. It would also then clear out some of the blank areas where maybe a objective and a strategy are not directly related to the five priorities, just to make it a more efficient and concise document. So my goal is to have that to you in the next few weeks. But related to that, at this point, we had discussed the idea of approving the evaluation instrument at the July meeting. But I'm wondering, since we have a formative evaluation discussion scheduled for July 25th, would it be productive to be able to allow a little more discussion around that instrument during that formative discussion, kind of preview where we've been, where we're headed, and then bring it forth for approval in August? I wanted to kind of get your thoughts around that idea.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Ms. Heliger?
Yeah, I would definitely agree to doing that, especially after we've gone through a formative evaluation, because there's some things that I think that we've discussed when it comes to truly, true deliverables and that I think are kind of missing still in this particular instrument that I would like to see us putting into the document.
Good.
Mrs. James?
I would, I would agree with Ms. Heliger. I also, yes, I think that's a good idea. And I have a question on what's here right now under District Goal Three. I'm not sure this is covering, this is one of the priority items. I know it's just lifted right out of the strategic plan, but I'm not clear if it's one that actually should be here or if that's a not priority item.
Which item is that? What page are you on?
I'm on page three, District Goal Three, Objective One.
Page three?
Well, I don't know. I've got a couple of.
This was highlighted. It's not actually a leadership goal.
Okay, well, let me go through and review that carefully.
Okay.
Because I'll be reorganizing it anyway.
Okay, and then one other thing that when you're, that wasn't included here, but I think we have it as part of our superintendent evaluation instrument, is student achievement data. I know we've talked about different styles or mechanisms or ways we might include that, but I think it needs to be part of the superintendent's evaluation. So perhaps, do you have a proposal for that, or is that something you'd bring to us in future?
No, I'd like to. I think that'll be something we had already planned to talk about on July 25th because I'll definitely, you know, the immediate things that come to mind are the state assessments. But I think we'd also want to hear from the board and maybe have a dialogue during that discussion about other items that we may want to incorporate. So we'll provide you some ideas.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Okay, moving on to six C, the career and technical education specifications and site selection.
Yes, ma'am. We have with us this evening Jennifer Hendrickson from Stantec Architects. They're working with Meredith Watasek and our staff related to the construction of the new CTE Center. So I'd ask Meredith and Jennifer to come to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. We're just here to give you an update of where we are and the work that's been done. So I'll start by just kind of setting the stage of what we've done in the past couple of months since we last saw you in December. This slide, which is not meant to be readable from the audience perspective, but more so just as an overview for everyone to look at. In the fall, we presented a program of study with some estimated building space, and then after much discussion, we really were tasked with looking at, making sure that we're asking for the right amount of space. So we met with user groups and we really evaluated that. And what we've done is that we've met with many people and come up with a plan of action that we are bringing forth tonight for you to consider, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 177,000 square feet for the new facility. One of the things that came out of meeting with our user groups and our business and industry partners, as everyone came to the table, is really the synergies behind the programs that we're putting at the facility. And so what you're looking at is kind of a color-coded chart of how we would group those programs together in a new facility. And when we talk about synergies, we really talk about how we're going to educate the students, not only in one program area, but collaboratively in multiple program areas. So just a quick overview of what that might look like. If we were putting together a style show or a fashion show, we might engage students from all different areas. For example, our arts and audio/video communication students and our technology students to run the lights, and our arts and audio/video students to record that and such so on. So what you're looking at is the development of our career communities, which is like-minded groups of students that will be clustered together. And I'll let Jennifer talk about how that plays out.
Thank you, Meredith. Good evening. This slide that's showing on the screen is what we call an adjacency diagram, and what it's trying to show is some key relationships between the programs. So it's color-coded based on the career communities. I'm going to start on the left-hand side. There's the front door for the facility itself, the administrative entry where the students come in. Sorry, everybody's looking at me. I'll point right here. Front door of the facility. I'm going to go around the building counterclockwise. There are five enterprises that all have front door facilities, and then as the programs grow, will provide services to the community. So the first one is culinary, the second one is cosmetology, the third one is transportation, and around in the back is education and training, which is where there'll be three-year-old and four-year-old students. The students would deserve the live care of those infants. And then the credit union being the fifth enterprise entry. And what we're trying to show in this diagram is, number one, there's some in-and-out front door that needs to be established to provide those services to the community, but there's also some key elements that need direct access to the outdoor, you'll see by these big, large triangles. So transportation, manufacturing, and the advanced construction. Those all have loading needs as you drive the car into the auto bay to receive its service and go back out. Manufacturing is really the welding, so there's stored materials and gases in a protected environment outside, bring it in. The advanced construction, the ability to perhaps do its HVAC and electrical and plumbing, but also maybe when these, all these groups work together in the shared space, each of the communities have a shared community. So the blue, which is the design and innovation, shares collaborative space. Culinary and cosmetology has a shared space. And education and credit union, those shared spaces house some key elements, which include the teacher work center, which is where the teachers will office. They'll have their planning so that we can engage in cross-pollination of planning between the programs. There'll also be medium group workspaces, instructional pull-out spaces, a library space, and all of that will be connected to what we call a maker space, which is cross-collaboration space. So we're trying to embrace the 21st century elements of being, working together and being a very flexible, dynamic environment where the students simulate real-world examples and practice their skills in the facility. On the second floor is the groups that are more independent and are not tethered to the ground floor. So we have arts and AV, information technology, and they have their, part of their shared spaces upstairs, the agricultural and natural resources group, which is the blue, and we have the health and science, which focuses on health, hospital simulation, doing the vitals as well as physical therapy, and then the law and public safety program. In a nutshell, about 70% of the program space will be on the ground floor, and about 30% will be on the second floor. And the key is to get the collaboration happening both horizontally on their floors, but also vertically. We took all of that information with the groups, and we did consider two sites. We believe the tail fair site is the site that achieves all the goals and the challenges, most importantly, looking at the visibility and access. This is going to be a destination center for your district. So being located, very easy access off Highway Six and alternate 90, it's within one or two turns, you're right at the facility or the land. There's frontage on both University Drive as well as Chatham. The whole site itself is about 65 acres. We're not going to use all of it. We'll show you in the next slide. Off to the left, part of the tail fair master plan is that this would be green space. This line that you can't really see, that's drainage. And up here is the regional airport. So lots of green space around, so this facility will be able to be seen from all directions, which is desirable. It's easy to find, and it also. It's easy to find and it'll also be a great front door for the district. This is just a diagram. This is not the resulting design, but it's really just to show you how we are focusing on using a portion of the site with frontage on University and a little bit of frontage on Chatham because there's five front doors. We can't all get them on one street, so we want to make use of that corner. And then carve out a piece roughly about 23 acres out of the 65 that we will develop for our facility, leaving a large shape that you can either expand this facility in the future or do future development of a different kind. So it gives the district flexibility for the use of that land in the future. It has plenty of space. We think it's really awesome in terms of where we are in project milestones. Tonight, we're sharing you the information. July, we're going to come back. Hopefully, you'll approve the program in the ed spec so that we can move into the design phases. Right after the July, we're going to try to come back as soon as possible to show you schematic design approval. And between now and the end of the year is what we call design, which is the design phases plus the documentation. And the very first quarter of next year, we'd put it on the street for contractors to solicit pricing in the February, March timeframe. And we would come back to you in April to approve the construction cost. And once that's approved, we construct the facility and we've got about a 16-month window planned, which is appropriate. We want this to open up in August 2018, so knowing that that's the finish line, we really need to kind of stay true to our milestones as we move from here to the finish line. So that was a whirlwind tour. You got a lovely book in your packet and the PowerPoint, so I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Hendrickson and Ms. Watasek. We appreciate that presentation. Ms. Helliger.
I have a question. Just help me refresh my memory here. We, this is going to be, this is supposed to be our centralized location. So what are we doing to get our students from way over by where I live to this particular center? Because telefair is not central to me at all. Just what are we, what are we going to do?
Absolutely. Great question. Thank you. When we looked at all of the information last summer and into the fall as we started presenting, we were considering multiple sites on various locations of the district from down past Sienna all the way up north towards the Bush area. And so as we did the traffic pattern studies, really, we were looking at the amount of time a student would spend on a bus because right now, we bus our students to this facility twice a day. We don't currently have enough parking for them to drive themselves, although in a new facility, the desire would be for them to have that flexibility if they would like. This site has access up University and up, or through Highway 90, Highway 6, and then closer to 59. So when you start measuring distance and time, of course, Kempner High School, Clements High School, Austin High School are going to take less time to travel here, if you would, but all in all, this site provided the shortest distance and amount of time, considering traffic pattern studies, for all of the campuses. So it takes about 37 to 42 minutes from any given campus and that is built into the student's schedule with our half-day program.
Wow, that's, that's a lot of time. So you've got 42 minutes on a bus and based on the number of credits that they have to have, you know, especially in high school, are we, are we going to be able to, with the half-days there, be able to still meet those credits requirements of those, of those students that's coming from our longest distance?
Yes, ma'am.
And feed them. And feed them.
And feed them. So we don't feed them. They're not there at lunchtime. So we don't feed them. They're there for a morning rotation or an afternoon rotation, so they eat lunch at their home campus. So let's take an AM schedule, if you will. The students would go to their home campus just like they normally would and they would meet their tech ed bus if they're driving. At about 7:00, 7:05, they would travel to the new center and so they might start class around 7:40, 7:45. It adjusts as we work out all those schedules with the transportation department. Because it is a unique center and we're not sending students all over the world, we don't have seven and eight-minute transition periods in between classes. And so they're able to get their number of minutes, their number of instructional minutes to receive their two credits because they don't break in between like they do on a traditional campus. So they may go to their two hours of automotive and not necessarily break, and then when they have three to five minutes to change to their next class, they're still getting their, their same number of instructional minutes that they need. It averages out to about 45 minutes per instruction period. And so that's how we're able to fit the three periods on, on the CTE site. That's the same, that's the same program that we have currently set up. So they're traveling right now to tech ed behind Dulles and so that, that amount of time also is about the same consistently speaking. It's just different for different campuses.
So we're saying that currently, right now, we have a 42-minute wait, based on the location now at Dulles. We've got a 42-minute drive time from, what is the school?
So Bush High School has our longest drive time to tech ed currently. And a lot of it just depends on traffic, but our, our average is about 37 to 42 minutes. We'll be happy to build a second one.
That would be nice.
It'd be great.
That would be real nice.
But, but we're just going to build up the interest this time and get it where it needs to be and do everything right so that when the time comes for us to do a second one, that, that we're ready.
Okay. One, one other question, if you can refresh my memory as well. When it comes to the public access, we've got the five public accesses that are here. And I remember when I'm, when I'm at the current CTE center, the public was able to use, you know, certain places, they could come and get their hair done, those kinds of things. Quick question, do we have, will this center be used? Can someone who just recently graduated, who did not possibly have access to it or based on current schedules, you know, did not, weren't able to maybe complete a certification or anything like that, will they be able to come back and finish or do some work here at the CTE?
One of the biggest desires in, in developing this building that we don't currently do in our district, but we want to see moving forward, is how do we use this facility in the evenings, in the weekends, and in the summer? And so that's twofold. And so we want to build it well, we want to get our programs set up, and then we want to put systems in place so that we can offer those evening opportunities, weekend and then summer opportunities. So yes, it may be somebody that is recently graduated and we want to provide a four-week training during the summer that they can come and get, get some type of certification. That may be true for any of our students who don't have the number of credits needed to travel to this type of facility, but they could come in the summer and earn industry certification by doing a very compacted summer routine, if you will. So that is one way we want to use the facility. And then the second way would be to train our own employees. So there's many opportunities for, for us to utilize this facility on weekends, evenings, and summers to train our own employees.
Well, that's excellent. I would like to see some type of, you know, roadmap to get to, get us to that point because I think we, we have an opportunity where our students are graduating, those who are, you know, we have some that are going straight to college, but we still have a gap for students who are not quite yet ready for the real world and are to go to college and they need some type of skill set. And I think we could utilize this since they're right out of high school, they're familiar with, you know, our structure and our teachers. I think this is something where we can utilize that. So I would definitely like to see some type of roadmap to that point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Mr. Rice?
Yes, thank you for a very good presentation. My one question is, I think I read in the material that we cut 11 classrooms. And maybe someone on the board can refresh my memory. I'm sure I was here, but I can't recall why we cut 11 classrooms. Does anyone know? Was it just to save money?
The conversation in the fall when we originally presented the first document and we included 15 traditional classrooms outside of the needs for the CTE programs were with the thought of maybe we wanted to place some advanced academic courses that weren't being offered at every single campus at this facility and use it for dual purpose. And then we were asked at the end of November to, to maybe refocus and reconsider. So what we were able to do is once we met with our user groups, we really dug deep in looking at what instructional spaces we need, how could we utilize that instructional space very intelligently? So we still have the traditional classrooms that these teachers would need to move into and out of. For example, we may be offering a forensic science class that aligns with the criminal justice. So there's a tradition-